or designate prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers requiring a translator will have six minutes, regardless of the number of agenda items to be addressed. Comments or discussion by the city council, board, and/or commission members will only be made at the time the subject is scheduled for consideration. Does anyone submit a public comments?
No, Chair, they have not.
Thank you. Item three minutes, consideration of and action on the minutes of the May 21st, 2025 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Yeah, I have a motion from Mr. James. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Mr. Morton. If you approve, raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, item four, public hearing. Item five, I'm sorry, item four A, public hearing. Receive and hear all persons desiring to be heard regarding a proposed special exception to the street side yard setback for 4014 Brookdale Court, Lot 35, Block 2, Brazos Landing, Section 2, in the standard single-family residential R-1 zoning district. Planning staff will now make their presentation.
Good evening, Board. Before the staff presentation, I just wanted to do a quick introduction. Welcome, Lucas. This is Lucas Corbett. He is our GIS planner, and he has been with the city. He's right here. And he has been with the city since last May. He is, his expertise is map making, but he also helps assist us with plan review. And so this is his first presentation. So please welcome Lucas, and I'll hand it over to him.
Thank you, Jess. That's a little close. Good evening, everyone. The property located at 4014 Brookdale Court was platted as Brazos Landing, Section 2, back in 1999, and then subsequently annexed into the City of Sugar Land in 2005 with R1 standard residential zoning applied to the property upon annexation. The applicant is requesting a special exception to the street yard setback for a proposed deck remodel attached to the rear of the home. Moving on to an overview of the, to an overview of this case, the platted restriction for the property established a 15-foot street side yard setback, whereas the R1 zoning district requires a 20-foot street side yard setback. The proposed deck would align with the platted restrictions on the property and be located approximately 15 feet from the street side property line, encroaching five feet into the required street yard, street side yard setback. This special exception would relieve the 20-foot R1 street side yard setback requirement and would allow for the deck to be constructed as proposed. Next, we can look at the proposed site plan. Here we can see the existing two-story residence, the green representing a proposed patio, as well as what we are concerned with today, the new second-story deck in dark blue. All good. The applicant plans to demolish an existing second-story deck and exterior staircase. In its place, build a new deck, which would again be situated approximately 15 feet from the street side property line, which follows the platted restrictions for this property. On this slide, we can see a street side view of the side elevations for the proposed deck. And then on, this is going to be an aerial view of the property represented by that red pin. So staff have conducted an analysis of the proposed project and concluded that it appears to be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Approximately three homes in the immediate vicinity do not meet the required 20-foot street side yard setback. Those homes are shown in yellow on the map, and our subject property is shown in red on the map. Moving on to our special exception criteria. Number one, was this property platted prior to annexation? Yes. Number two, is the recorded restriction less restrictive than the setback that's established per zoning? Yes. Is the special exception not less restrictive than the recorded restriction? Yes. Number four, staff has evaluated the proposal and determined that there are not any issues or anything that would be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to the neighborhood. Public hearing notification requirements were met. Mailers were sent out to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. There was a public hearing notification posted in the Fort Ben Independent and on the city's website as well. There was also a courtesy sign placed on the subject property. Staff did receive one inquiry this morning, and they are not aware of any opposition at this time. Staff recommends the approval of this special exception with the conditions that the proposed deck be constructed with accordance to the attached site plan and elevations. The applicant and I are available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
The board, with regard to matters pertaining to the public hearing, will be received at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Chair, we do not have anyone signed up.
Okay, now I close the public hearing. We will now move forward with consideration of an action on a proposed special exception to the street side yard setback for 4014 Brookdale Court, Lot 35, Block 2, Brazos Landing, Section 2, in the standard single-family residential R-1 zoning district. Let's begin discussion of the criteria. First criteria, the latest recorded plat of the property was approved prior to being annexed into the city. Do we agree that the plat was recorded prior to being annexed?
Yes.
Okay. Second criteria, the latest recorded plat or other recorded restriction for the property establishes a setback or other regulation that results in a setback that is less restrictive than the setback required by the City of Sugar Land Development Code, Chapter 2. Do we agree that the recorded restrictions are less restrictive than those established by the City of Sugar Land Development Code?
Yes.
Yeah. Third criteria, granting the special exception will not establish a setback that is less restrictive than the setback established by the latest approved plat or other recorded restriction. Do we agree that the proposed special exception is not less restrictive than the recorded restrictions? Okay, fourth criteria, granting the special exception will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the district or neighborhood in which the property is located. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Just one question for the other three homes in the area. Just curious what their, what their side yard setback exception granted is, like if they're not meeting the criteria. Three other homes aren't meeting that criteria. Just curious what that, their actual setback is.
So, most of the homes in the area fall into that 15-foot side yard setback, or a street side yard setback.
Okay, but the three homes in yellow on the, on the, on the map?
Right, yeah, because since there's not many homes in the area that, you know, actually have a street side yard. Those are the three in the immediate area, and all three of those did not meet the 20-foot required setback, setback of the city. Does that make sense?
But they met the 15.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah, they do.
Okay.
To clarify, this development was, the homes in this area were constructed prior to annexation. So like the subject property, the deck was existing at the time that the R1 regulations were imposed, so that 20-foot street side setback. So they don't have special exceptions. They were just constructed at the time that the platted restriction was 15 feet.
Understood, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wayne?
Yes, one quick question. I know we're not representing the HOA, but did the HOA have any comments or concerns?
Uh, they had approved the deck at the time when they had submitted the building permit.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Staff has examined the proposed special exception for three key aspects. Number one, public safety review. There does not appear to be any public safety issues associated with this request. Staff has not identified safety concerns as a result of the proposed deck. Number two, street side yard setback comparison. The proposed deck appears to be generally compatible with the neighborhood based on an analysis of the surrounding area. Approximately three homes within the immediate area do not meet the street side yard setback requirement of 20 feet. Proposed improvement is in compliance with the recorded restrictions. Number three, general architectural. The proposed improvements appear to be architecturally compatible with the existing single-family residence and neighborhood. Are there any additional comments? Okay, then I'd ask for a motion for approval or denial.
I move that the special exception to the single-family residential district R1R side yard setback standards for proposed improvement to the property located at 4014 Brookdale Court be granted with the condition that it is constructed in accordance with the attached site plan and elevations.
I have a motion from Mr. Morton. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Mr. Alvarado. All those who approve, raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We have item five, annual orientation. Review of and discussion on the purpose, roles, responsibilities, and functions of the zoning board of adjustment.
Good evening, Board. I hope you're doing well. I will try not to bore you and go as quickly as possible as I can. If at any time you have a question or need some sort of clarification, please feel free to stop me, and I will, I will address that. This is our annual orientation for fiscal year '27. I feel the, I feel the joy, I feel the love. Congratulations to our alternate members who are now regular members, Mr. Alvarado and Mr. White, and as well as welcoming Ms. Gandhi, who is our alternate member. And thank you for the rest of our board for your continued service. We have... I didn't, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry. Okay. We have five regular board members, as well as three alternate members with one alternate member position filled currently. I'll do an overview of your authority, your rules of procedure, and your role. The ZBA was established in 1991 by the city council, city charter. You hear appeals to administrative decisions as well as the interpretations to the zoning ordinance. And you hear and decide upon special exceptions and variances, a special exception that you heard tonight. Your authority is also granted by Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 211, which is, it charges you with the hearing and deciding upon relief of zoning regulations. Those zoning regulations come from the Development Code that is housed on minicode.com if you're ever interested. Like I said, there are five regular members and three alternate members, each serving two-year terms, which are staggered. The city council appoints the chair and the vice chair. The chair presides over this board as well as signs any official documents on behalf of the board. For example, any filing that was done tonight with the action for the special exception, the chair will sign and get, it gets filed with the city clerk's office. The vice chair will serve in absence of the chair. And then in the event there is no chair and no vice chair present at a meeting, a board member can open the meeting, and the board will then elect a temporary chair for that meeting. Absences are reported immediately when you would know either to planning or the city clerk's office. Alternate members will serve in the absence of a regular member. And if a regular member misses three consecutive board meetings, you're deemed automatically resigned from the board. Good point. Records are kept by the city clerk's office. Again, that's that agenda preparation that you have before you, as well as the minutes and any board's decisions and filings that were mentioned. General overview of the ZBA meetings is a call to order. Your public comment, public comment is limited to three minutes. It is different than a public hearing, and public comment is restricted to an agenda item on the agenda. So if it's not listed on the agenda, you can have somebody maybe come and speak about the weather for three minutes to this board. You have your review and approval of the minutes, as well as what you'll see for any variance or special exception with a public hearing, and then followed by a consideration and action. And then on nights like tonight, you may have a workshop or an orientation, and then your adjournment. Rules of procedure, your last adopted rules of procedure were from August of 2019. It incorporates things like, we talked about your attendance, swearing in of speakers if you were to have someone speak during that public hearing. Your meeting times, your meeting times are 5 o'clock on the third Wednesday of each month, unless we don't have cases to bring before you, which is a good thing, right? In the event that we do have to cancel a meeting, we do let you know as soon as possible. It's usually about a month in advance, so you can have your, your Wednesday back to you. For a meeting, we need five members. We take four for the quorum. However, you need four for actual decision. So five is always preferred, hence why we have alternates. It is expected that all regular members and alternates will attend the meetings and provide notification if unable to attend. Alternates, when not needed, as a regular board member, will sit in the audience so they can familiarize themselves with the issues and decision-making, and generally how the board functions. Any conflicts? Shay will probably get into this a little bit more with you, but in the event you have any personal conflict with an agenda item, you must inform the city clerk before the meeting, and you can consult with the city attorney's office before that. You're not allowed to discuss and vote on an, on an item. The city's attorney's office can provide you more guidance on what that seamlessly would look like. You are allowed to have executive sessions. The board may adjourn into a closed executive session with the city attorney's office in order to receive legal advice on an agenda matter. And that's important, says on an agenda matter. You do not take any final action, a decision, or vote while in closed executive session. And then therefore, all communication that is held in an executive session is privileged. You do not speak with it outside of that executive session with board members nor the public. Behind the scenes, staff does a lot of preparation to get to this point. We talk to the applicants, we assist them, we shepherd their application through the process, we provide review and analysis, we prepare the public hearing notice both for the newspaper and the mailers. We do field investigations and the mapping that you saw before you tonight. Yes, sir.
Microphone? You're strong, but I need to record it.
I'm on a levy board, and when we go into executive session, we have to record our executive session. We don't have to necessarily type it out, but it has to be recorded for posterity. Why not here?
I will have our city attorney's office answer that.
I'm not aware of any specific rule that would require recording, but we do do certified minutes, so there is an actual record of the meeting. Yes.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we provide the requests to you in writing, as well as the staff report, and then the presentation that you had before you tonight. Another special duty of the zoning board of adjustment is the airport zoning board of adjustment. It has not been used, to my knowledge, but it is in direct relation to Chapter 9 of the Development Code, which looks at the airport height hazard regulations. So in the event a variance would be filed, this board would make that determination. However, it would go through FAA review before it is brought to you, as well as a very robust orientation as to walk you through that process. Now we'll talk about our variances, special exceptions, and appeals, although I don't think I need to dwell too long on the special exceptions for you. Variances are done by Texas state statute. There are reliefs for special circumstances on property when those are present. It's not something that you look at as far as land use. So if a piece of property doesn't allow office, and somebody wants to put office on that property, you as a board can't make a decision and say, we think office should be a land use there. There's a completely different mechanism called rezoning and a public process done by city council. You do look at the different four criteria that you have, each one, and you will judge it subjectively. Staff does not provide a recommendation for that, but we would supply, provide you with factual-based evidence in order to help make that decision. Like I said, there are four, we need four votes out of five to make a decision, hence why it's so important that we always have five members present and sitting on the dais. With that criteria, we look to see that it's not, the variance request is not contrary to public interest, that there are special circumstances or conditions of the land or the building. Literal enforcement of it would not result in unnecessary hardship, and that the variance request is still within the spirit of the ordinance, and it would not, there would be no substantial injustice, I guess, done to the property. Looking at this with no, contrary to public interest, we look at basic things such as fire, emergency services. What does it look like in the area? Are we seeing some of those existing setback patterns to prevent, to present to you? We also take into consideration the public, any comments or concerns. Again, this is subjective. Criteria two, looking at special circumstances with the land or the building. A lot of times you'll see like maybe a unique piece of property, and they can't meet like a setback. If you've got like a triangular-shaped piece of property, maybe they can't make it work. They've, they've gone through every avenue, and they just can't. They, they truly do have like a hardship with the shape, or maybe not so much in this part of the country, but maybe the topography of it. We can maybe see it in reverse, right? Because we don't drain much over here. Variance criteria three is the strict enforcement would create the hardship. Again, you would want to ask that question, what is reasonable, what is like unnecessary to that? This one always probably seemed a little vague. So the state, with all their help with HB 1474, provided guidance, I believe, back in 2019. These are a little bit more, these aren't like necessarily subjective, these criteria, because they do look at 50% of the appraised value of it. It's looking at if there's a total loss of like 25% of the land area. If, if, if by abiding to the code, do you trigger anything else in as far as compliance out of the code? Are you encroaching into another person's property? Are you making something non-conforming? So it's a little bit more subjective with HB 1475 with it, but this is just one facet of criteria three that you need to look at. And then there's criteria four with the spirit of the ordinance. This is where you weigh the intent, and if there are any special circumstances or conditions that are present. Thinking about it in a sense of, is it just this one property owner that needs this variance? Is this affecting the whole neighborhood? If the answer is, is everybody in the neighborhood and all their properties look the same, and they're just asking for something different? It's not a special circumstance with it. So that's a really, really great rate of look at it. Variances can be granted with compliance to a site plan similar to a special exception. There can also be some mitigating factors, whether that would be some landscaping, buffering, fencing. And then there's also that instance where you can grant something less than what is the request. There could be an instance where someone wants a relief to a 25-foot front yard setback. Their request is for 10 feet. You may find that 20 feet is acceptable and not 10 because of safety concerns, maybe for parking a car safely in a driveway, not being over a sidewalk, that sort of thing. Lots of things to look at. Now we'll talk about special exceptions. These replace a variance process because they look at property that was either, that was platted before something was annexed or incorporated into the city. So as Lucas talked about earlier, we have property that, you know, they've had these like second decks or this 15-foot street side yard setback. It's existed in that capacity. Zoning comes in, says it should be greater. Well, the state, in its wisdom, has allowed us to say, that's a special exception that can be granted. Those criteria that are fully affiliated with this are mostly not subjective. It's factual, it either meets the criteria, it doesn't. One other thing that Mr. White that you brought up, we look at HOA, POA, et cetera, that it's in compliance with what they're looking for also when we get to this point. Again, if it's platted prior to annexation or incorporation, we're looking at those recorded restrictions either by plat or by deed, and if they're less restrictive than our zoning. And then by granting that special exception, we're not creating something that's just less restrictive than what's on the recorded deed. So if the recorded deed or the plat says 15 feet, staff's not making a recommendation of 13 feet. It's going to be 15 feet, so it doesn't have to adhere to the zoning. And then the only criteria that's subjective is the fourth, is if it's detrimental to public welfare or to the neighborhood. Again, a subjective criteria. This is an example of how you could like approve a criteria basically with no conditions that would be on it. This is one where, this is just a good example of kind of what Lucas had brought before you, but showing that we've got some platted property here and that it's extending over into the driveway. In this case, it was a bit of a different, pretty different. It came before you, but it was a 30-inch side yard setback. So that's not really your run-of-the-mill, like 15 feet, 10 feet. The zoning in this case was R1R, and it said you had to be five feet from it. So we, we, we were able to establish that the plat was recorded in 1998 and then annexed in 1997. There were no other issues with it, so this board did, did approve this special exception request. Criteria four, when we're looking at, I think I might have covered that already, sorry. This is an analysis similar to what Lucas provided before, where you're looking at the different, different areas in blue. In this instance, these were similar cases in the neighborhood where we're doing that analysis. And then also looking at what the setback is going to be, that it's architecturally compatible and as well has been approved by the HOA. These are your options for approval, denial. Like I said, the only thing that's subjective is that fourth one. So if you, as a board, were determined that this was detrimental to the neighborhood, this is when you would want to deny it. There may be instances where you want to conditionally approve it. Again, with special exceptions, just like variances, there can be a difference. So, you know, you may, it may be 15 feet, and the zoning says that it's 20 feet. Well, can you comply? Do you need all 15? You know, maybe it's 17 feet. And in that case, you could do some sort of like conditional approval or if there's buffering that's needed with it. So, because if you felt like there, it would be detrimental to the neighborhood. Possible conditions, I think I just went through these. It's very typical, but the recommendations that we brought to you is always in compliance with the site plan and the building elevation drawings that you saw tonight. This is another example of a site plan and how it would get approval. We're three feet off of the, the property line. The zoning says it's supposed to be 10 feet. It's, it's consistent with the neighborhood, so this would be a site plan that would get approved with a special exception. Appeals, appeals are done for either, for interpretations to the code, the director's interpretation. It's the same process where they would bring forward to you the reasons why they think that the code is not being interpreted in the manner that they feel that it should be read. The burden of proof is always on the applicant, and it's the same criteria where you have to have four out of five to overturn what staff's interpretation would be. The caveat with this is that once the interpretation goes into effect, this is how staff in any future, any future determinations that come before us would, would come forth. We would take whatever the zoning board of adjustment determines, and that's what that determination would be. So if it, it holds what the director says, then it's clear. If it's not, we would get that interpretation from you. Again, I don't think this happens very often, but never say never. And with that, I have any questions for my portion of the slides? Shay does have a presentation after this. Yes, sir.
I have one question, just more curiosity or reminding us. So HOA approval, you brought that up earlier. They're not looking at the setback, they're not looking at the same criteria we are. They're looking at things, architectural, safety, all that. So they're really helping us with, I guess, question number four. You know, so if they are proving that helps bolster number four, but one, two and three, that's not part of their purview, right? So that's a distinction.
I'm not entirely sure exactly what they look at. They definitely look at the architectural materials where staff is, staff's not permitted to do that.
So I kept trying to figure out, so HOA approval, why is that important to the things we're trying to do? Are they looking at criteria totally different than us? So it's just interesting that they approved it? Or does their approval help inform any of the criteria that we're looking at?
The approval lets us know that it's in compliance with their rules and regulations. They may be looking at those setbacks, I just honestly don't know. But it lets us know that they've looked at it and they're okay with it. So if they're okay with it in their neighborhood and it meets that criteria and we can see black and white that it meets our criteria, then yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think some of the HOAs look at elevations. If you're in the backyard, for example, as this could be, they would look at an elevation above a fence line that has to meet certain architectural concerns and colors and things of that nature.
Right, so basically they're answering the question four that we have, right? Which is, it's compatible, it's not creating a safety issue. That's where their approval is helpful to validate that fourth question. So that's, I'm good on that thing.
Well, what I'm gathering, we could overrule.
That's why it's subjective.
Yeah, so I noted. Okay, yeah, I'm good.
I do have one question. As it relates to the fourth criteria. If, when we think about things like proximity to a school or how, for instance, I think of just an imaginary scenario, but where it might, the fact that a school might be behind the home could be relevant to the situation. Does staff look at that and kind of take that into account in terms of injuries kind of to the public good?
As far as the property owner, what they're wanting to build with the school?
Yeah.
I would think it might be reversed, that the school might not want, you know, maybe in the instance of like a deck, they may not want, but.
I, yeah, I guess the reason I'm asking is, is the, when I think about that fourth criteria, I think it's a little bit larger than, I agree that homeowner association concerns and neighbor concerns that might, they might raise, you know, are relevant certainly, but there might be other concerns to the city or to other entities. I'm just curious if that's taken into account by staff or not.
We take everything into account. As you can see with Lucas's presentation, we do pretty thorough analysis to see what the neighborhood looks like. We also go into that neighborhood, because we put a sign up. So we also do visuals to see what else like we're seeing in there. So, yeah, we do take into account, we don't make the recommendations, I would say, like in a bubble, just sitting behind our desk, so.
Didn't mean to suggest that.
Take it that way. Sorry.
I don't know if it will helps to answer that question to you, but the criteria that you look at are prescribed by law. So legally, you are looking at everything the law says you are required to look at. Okay, good evening. I will get to the legal portion. Did I just press the button? I've just been up here a while. Okay, just kind of have a few high-level things to go over that you should keep in mind while you're serving on the board. So the first thing I'll mention is the Texas Open Meetings Act, which basically just requires your decisions to be made in public so that our citizens and the public can be informed on what you're actually doing. And it does require that these meetings be open to the general public. So it's just some basic requirements. I do need to update this slide. It used to be that we had to post meetings 72 hours in advance. That did change this last legislative session. It is now three business days. Basically what that means is we used to post on Fridays, now we post on Wednesdays. For your purposes, it's just kind of helpful to know potentially that we do have a time limit by which our agendas have to be posted in order for this meeting to actually be held. Some general things in the notice are just, we give the date, the hour, the place and the subject. We are required to include enough information so that a member of the general public can tell what you are actually going to be discussing and potentially taking action on. And those decisions happen out here in public. So with regards to these meetings, in order to meet the Open Meetings Act, we are not allowed to discuss anything unless it has actually been posted on an agenda for discussion. So yourself or staff, we can give factual information back and forth. You might be able to get policy statements regarding an inquiry, but really, we are confined for the most part to discussion for what's on the agenda. So for tonight, we are allowed to talk about the special exception that was just granted and this orientation. So what is a meeting for purposes of the Open Meetings Act? It means that there are four members present and there is a public business or issue within your jurisdiction that has some deliberation in a space that is open to the public. There are some exceptions to the Open Meetings Act where you have to make decisions in public. We can go into executive session. The bane to your reasons why, or the main one reason why this board might ever would, would be to receive advice from an attorney. That would be rare, but I suppose there is an instance where it could happen. But even if we were to go back into executive session and you were to hold your deliberations in private, you would still be required to come back out here, be on the dais and actually make your final recommendation or decision in public. What's really important for you guys to know tonight is that you want to avoid what's called a walking quorum. So let's say you all received your agenda packets for tonight. And Mr. Chair, you decided to call Mr. James and be like, hey, what do you think about this item that we're going to be talking about next week? And you have a discussion about it. You hang up the phone and then you call Mr. Morton. You engage in the same type of conversation and so on and so forth. Until everyone, while you aren't all having the same conversation at the same time, you have actually all had a conversation with at least one other board member on something that you're going to be discussing in public on an agenda item. And that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. It is considered a walking quorum. And this, the slide describes it much more succinctly. It's a serial meeting of less than a quorum. It could be an overlapping series of meetings where quorum is not in the same room at the same time. And it can happen electronically. It could be happened by emails, texting, social media. So really, the main thing to take away is if you receive emails from the city or you're doing anything electronically discussing city business, especially by email, don't hit the reply all button. That's where you would be more, most likely to potentially get into trouble. Things that are not a meeting. Social functions related to public business, regional, state or national conventions or workshops and ceremonial events. You know, as board members, you may be invited to participate in city events and there may be multiple members present. Typically, if we know that there may be a quorum of you present, we may still post a public notice just in case public business may get discussed. But if no formal action occurs, then discussion is just incidental. This is important for you to know about because there are consequences. If you were to take an action and meeting wasn't posted, the action could be voidable. We don't want that to happen. And there are criminal penalties, mainly if you knowingly engage in activity where you're trying to avoid making your decision in public. You know, if you're deliberately engaging in a walking quorum. And there are criminal penalties for that. It's not a huge fine, but it's still a fine. There is some potential for jail time and both fine and jail. So really, best practice is here. Just don't discuss any cases that are going to come before you outside of posted meetings. Don't email other public officials about ZBA matters. Don't post about things that you're deliberating on, on social media. Try to avoid a quorum if we can. And when we're in this room, try and stick to subject matters on the agenda. Now, I know Jessica did also mention conflicts and I do not have a slide for that. So I just want to let you know. If you have a financial relationship, a property ownership interest or any kind of relationship with a property or someone that is going to be coming before you, just let us know about it. We'll look at it, determine if there's a conflict or not. If there is a conflict, there's just a form you have to fill out and file and then you would abstain from participating in a vote on that matter. And just really, if you have any questions about anything that's legal, if there's a conflict, just let staff know and we will always be more than happy to look into it for you. And then do you have any other questions for me?
Kind of a crazy one and I can't imagine what it would be, but say one of us wanted to add something to the agenda for discussion purposes or something. Do we see the agenda early enough to get something added before it goes on public meeting?
We have a very long lead time for agenda items. If there was something that would come up, my recommendation would be to let staff know as soon as possible. And then we can determine whether it's something appropriate to be on an agenda and look into how we move forward.
Well, most of the time we don't have meetings. So we get, we get the agenda, you know, most of them are canceled. So if there is a meeting where there is an agenda set up, do we get the agenda early enough that, heaven forbid, we wanted to, we could add something to the agenda for a discussion purpose? Just, it's a, it's a what-if question. It's not something that comes up.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the timing is on providing that information.
I would just kind of reiterate what Shay said. If there is something in advance, let us know and we would be talking with the chair and figuring out if that is something that's in the purview of this board and then we would put it on an upcoming agenda, so.
Once the agenda is posted, that is set, we can't add to that agenda. So this agenda tonight, we could not have added to. But if you have something you'd like to bring up, that's, I think, what you're saying.
Yeah.
But once it's posted, it's set.
Correct.
My question is, could we see the agenda before it's posted? So that if we did have something to add, we'd have the add option. You know, send it to us a day early and then post it.
I mean, typically, so the types of cases that come before you are pretty specific. Your focus is rather narrow in that. So again, I would ask that if there is something, we do have a standing meeting technically every month. And as you've, as you've all mentioned, you know, yes, some of them have been canceled this year for lack of having cases to bring forward. But if there is something, we would like to know about it and we'll figure out if that is something that we could put on the agenda.
All right, item six, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, a motion for Mr. James to have a second.
I second.
Second for Mr. Morton. All those approve, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.